Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 18th Select Board Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
We have here today Mr. Jared Chadwick, Ms. Judith Whiteside, Mr. Ron Bessie, Mr. Alan Slaven, Mr. --
Mr. Bowen and Mr. Sullivan will both be remote attending.
I pulled a thing on Mr. Bowen. And, oh yeah, I'm here too, Patricia Wertz.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. Is the captain of the basketball game out there?
Elijah's one of the captains, right?
Go get him.
Yes.
Yeah, she's here.
Please. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Elijah Carrion, who's one of the captains of the championship basketball team.
Elijah, just come right up to him.
There you go.
Just say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which is still as one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We have a really neat thing to do tonight, and that is to recognize the boys' championship basketball team. We invited all of the players, the coaches, and the parents and guardians and family of all of the young men who led the team to victory. Congratulations to them. So first of all, we are going to have Elijah Carrion come on in, and the awards are going to be handed out by Mr. Bessie and Mr. Chadwick because they probably know some of these kids from football or other things. And what we're going to do is have each of the kids come in with their parent or guardian or family, whoever they want, one at a time. We'll give them the certificate, and then we'll ask for a team photo later on, okay? So Elijah Carrion, who is 6'2" and a senior and a center, and one of our coaches, one of our captains. So now, Mr. Bessie's giving instructions, too. Elijah? Elijah's going to come in?
Elijah?
Elijah Carrion is here. He's 6'2", senior and center, and one of our captains. Yeah, one of our captains. So congratulations. Do you have family with you? Do you want to have your picture taken with your family? Come on in. Ron, you're going to move over so your face isn't -- yeah, keep going. Okay. Next, we have Aaron Kotay, I hope, it's Kotay, who is a freshman guard at 5'10". Aaron?
Hello?
How are you?
Good.
Good. Come on in.
No, no, come on over here.
You've -- thank you very much. Your family with you tonight?
Family with me?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Come on in. Have your picture taken.
Here, you guys look right up there for the viewers at home.
There, and then you got the professor right here.
And now, we're looking for A.J. Can you send A.J. in, please? A.J. Lopes is a junior and plays guard. He's 5'10". Congratulations. And come on over.
Camera's right up there, and then we're going to take a photo.
The only person who's smiling is Mom. How come? Thank you. And then, we do have -- are the coaches here?
We should have one more player. Yes.
Oh, Diego Mello?
Yes.
Sorry. Is Diego Mello here? He's a junior guard, plays guard. He's six feet even. Congratulations, Diego.
I'm going to have to take a photo, and just want to look at the camera, the TV. And we've got a camera here.
Okay, awesome. And are all the coaches here?
They all went through.
Yeah. Can you -- why don't you send the three of the coaches in, please?
Head Coach Steve.
Yep.
Assistant Darian.
Yep.
Assistant Tim.
Assistant who?
Aaron.
Aaron?
All the coaches.
Yes, please.
Oh, Jamie's here, too.
Okay. So --
The camera's right up there. I don't want to shoot you those cameras.
Okay, so we have with us this evening Head Coach Steve Fanle, Assistant Coaches Darian Fernandez, Jamie Sylvia, and Aaron Baptiste. Congratulations. Hey, Fanny, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Okay, now, let's get as many of your team members back in and do a group.
And you.
And you guys stay.
You guys stay.
Thank you. We have certificates for all your team members, so we can give them to --
These are the certificates. Appreciate it.
This sounds silly, but short guys in the front. And you've got to get like six in a row, so get closer, and you know, the old prom way, so you're making a V.
It's all together, right?
Is that -- how does that look, guys? Okay? Awesome? Thank you very much. It's always nice to have something nice to report on, and so, congratulations, gentlemen.
That's the one I like.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for getting good news for the town.
How many days?
Okay, we will now go to regular announcements. Thank you, Mr. Bessie and Mr. Chadwick. Mr. Chadwick, any announcements, sir?
I only have one after --
After that?
Yeah, after mentioning the whole thing about the bylaws with the signs last week, I've taken a drive around town, and I'm starting to see them slowly disappear. So happy about that, and that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
Just one. This Saturday, Wareham Girl Softball has their opening day, so if you're around and you'd like to come and watch the girls play, they've got a lot of cool things going on for families to come, bounce houses, different activities for them, tons of raffles to help raise money for the organization. So if you're around and you want to come and see the girls play and support a good cause, come on out this Saturday and have some fun.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Uh-huh. We know how many Mr. Slaven has. It's more than one.
Just a couple. Reminding everybody, town meeting is this coming Monday night at the elementary school. You should show up if you have concerns about how we spend your money and how things work in the town. The Swiss Beach Light Street Crosswalk Road construction is scheduled for 2025. It was pushed back one year due to just basic difficulties getting it all done. There's also going to be an MMA seminar on public records, updating the rules. I'll try and forward it after all the different committees. It's important that they all follow what's changing going through. And last, for my public announcement type thing to help out, Mrs. Whiteside won't be happy, but there's a thing called Traditional Remedies. For those of you who have an occasional constipation, there's a thing called Smooth Move. It's a tea. It works great. I highly recommend it. Thank you.
Smooth. Obviously, he didn't have a schoolteacher who felt that she or he could goof, you know? Ms. Wertz, I don't think you could top that, but do you have any announcements?
I have two announcements. First, I want to remind everyone that Earth Day is happening, and there are a number of events all around town to celebrate it, so please take a look in the newspapers and the various places that issues are posted in Town Hall, in your post offices, et cetera, because there's going to be a lot happening. So that's number one. Number two is, I want to talk about the Wee Weantic Bridge. So if any of you drive over Route 6, and the bridge that is between Marion and Wareham is going to be -- the work's going to start shortly. I happen to live in a community right at the east end of that bridge, which is called Briarwood Beach, and we've received a notice from the state on what will be happening and how long it will be happening, and there are contact information in here to write to or email to people who you might have concern, what you might have about concerns or input about this bridge. My particular concern is the safety of those people living in Briarwood getting in and out of that neighborhood, as the road is on an uphill slant. It's going to take about two years. There are 130 houses in there, and 66 of them are full-time. So anyone else who has additional insight or input for that, please get in touch with -- we've put this notice out to everyone in the neighborhood, but we have more. Get in contact with me if you want it, and that's it.
Thank you. I have no other announcements except to remind you of the best deal in town, which is the used book sale put on by the Friends of the Library, starting on Thursday. Awesome, awesome place to get your winter reading, your summer reading, or whatever you want to call it. Other than that, we have no appointments, reappointments, or interviews. We have a 7:15 hearing, and I can't hold it until 7:15, so I will take a motion on Item 7A.
So I make a motion that we accept and confirm the application from dusk till dawn Tattoo Studio at 3065 Cranberry Highway, Suite C13E, and it's an application for a one-day liquor license for an event they're having.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. It is unanimous. Mr. Sherpa, would you step forward, please? Thank you. Mr. Sherpa is here. It's a new application for Sonam LLC DBA Pizza Boy Roast Beef. Why don't you have a seat, sir? Thank you. Do you just want to tell us about your -- you're the new owner? Yes, okay.
Me and my -- can I talk to you?
Yes, please.
Me and my wife, we are the owner, new owner, and then my son runs it. And then, right now, he's working seven days a week, and my wife is working five days, and I'm -- I'll be working three days. So and then, basically, we're keeping the same thing, everything same. Same worker, same menu, and nothing has changed, except the owners.
Awesome. Thank you. Any of my board members have any question of Mr. Sherpa?
Well, I was just going to ask, you know, if it was new ownership and why there was a reason for the application, so.
Yeah, and all of the paperwork is in order? Yes, Mr. Chadwick?
Just want to say I love your food.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. We'll be keeping the same recipe as well, everything.
I know somebody else who loves the food.
He stops there once a week, at least.
At least.
Yeah.
Please do.
Ms. Wertz, I'll accept a motion.
So I make a motion that we approve the application for Sonam LLC DBA Pizza Boy Roast Beef, 3103 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham, for a common virtual license and to be released when all signatures are received. So I think I have in front of me, sir, your application, and it just says the fire department hasn't done an approval yet, and it may have, if it has, we'll have this updated, but if not, you'll want to get that done.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Yes.
Have you had on the highway, you know, the road coming off the highway, the rampant stuff was pretty bad, have they fixed that for you? So cars driving in and out, don't ground it?
You know, it's really bumpy going into --
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think they're going to fix it, so.
It has not yet been fixed?
No.
I have a meeting this week, that's why I'm asking with them.
No, they haven't said anything yet.
All right, I'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. We're doing the roll call vote because it's a hybrid meeting, and I must do that in order to comply with the law. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. It has been approved. You will get a phone call from our office probably Monday to pick the license up, sir?
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Wish you all the success, sir.
Yes. We're going to make one motion for 7C. Ms. Wertz?
All right. I make a motion that we renew the second-hand dealer licenses for the following, and I'm going to read the names out because they're a little bit different on the application than what's on the paper. So it's for Clam Shack Antiques, Church of the Good Shepherd, Cranberry Flea Market, Discount Auto, Inc., First Congressional Church of Wareham, GameStop, number 3814, Gateway Golden Pond, Home Depot, LS Computers, Not Your Average Antiques, Seekers, South Coast Sport and Consignment, The Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Inc., Used Tire Warehouse, Inc., United Methodist Church, and renewal -- that's it. That's the end.
So you moved to renew all of those?
To renew all of them.
Is there a motion made and seconded? And again, there may be some paperwork missing, but the office will hold until those have been totally taken care of. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Mr. Underhill, why don't you come forward? We're going to do two more quick license renewals, please. Dee, please, for the renewal of Pawn Broker.
I make a motion, we renew the Pawn Broker's license for Gateway Golden Pond.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the renewal of the pawn license. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. It is approved, and the application from Gear Place. This is a new application. Is the individual from Gear Place here? No, go ahead.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve the application from the Gear Place, 245 Main Street, Wareham, Mass, for second-hand dealers license, and this one also, it's approved with the caveat that all approvals have been received before the licenses.
Is seconded, or motion?
Allowed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it has been granted. It is now 7:15 and change, and so, we are going to hear the report and the recommendation of the Cable Advisory Committee regarding Verizon New England, Inc. license. And with us, we have Mr. Underhill, and we have Mr. Train and Mr. Solomon. Are they here remotely?
Mr. Solomon, Attorney Solomon should be available.
Mr. Solomon, could you raise your hand? And Paul Train, if you're here, could you raise your hand? No? No?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Underhill. Could you identify yourself for the record?
So my name is Matthew Underhill. I am the chairman of the Wareham Cable Advisory Committee. We have been negotiating a renewal contract with Verizon for cable TV services under by the requirements of the negotiations with the state, is we have to hold a public hearing before and present a draft of the license before the board can vote in, you know, on the acceptance of this agreement. So, you know, some of the things that I do have a summary of things that have changed from the existing contract to what we have agreed upon. Currently, the current contract expires, you know, April 18th, so we have negotiated a five-year negotiation, a five-year renewal license with Verizon to continue providing cable TV services to the residents of the town of Wareham. The agreement will go from April 18th through April 17th, 2028. Part of the negotiations is Verizon may terminate the license upon giving the town 270 days written notice to the issuing authority, which would be the cable commissioners, the select board. However, Verizon may not provide notice of the termination sooner than the beginning of the 28th month following the effective date. In such termination, the PEG access capital payments will have to be made to the town prior to the effective date of termination if the -- if they do not plan on terminating their service in that five years.
Could you let him in, please?
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Part of the negotiations with cable access with Verizon for the capital payments is the town and Verizon have agreed. Capital payments broken up over the two years, a total of $230,000. I don't know if Mr. Solomon wants to speak at this point. I can turn it over to him, or I can continue.
It's up to you, Mr. Solomon. Do you choose to address this?
Hi, I'd be happy to speak. Matt's done a great job. If you'd like me to, I can. I was out here for some reason.
Can you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Thank you.
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Mike. Thank you. So as Matt indicated, the capital payment --
Can you identify yourself?
He can't.
Unmute? Can you hear me?
Mr. Solomon, could you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Sure. I apologize.
Thank you.
William Solomon, Special Cable Counsel for the town of Wareham, and this Verizon license renewal. I've worked with the town for over 20 years on cable licensing, and it's good to be here with the board. Thank you. So if you'd like, I can pick up where Matt left off. Good job, Matt. As Matt mentioned, the PEG capital grant is $230,000. Excuse me. That's paid in four payments. As he indicated, $50,000 within 45 days, $50,000, the first anniversary of the effective date, which is today, if the board so votes. $50,000 on the second anniversary, $80,000 on the third anniversary. So the license is indicated as a five-year license. Consistent with other Verizon licenses since January of 2021, Verizon has the option of to terminate after three years. They cannot -- it's a six-month letter they have to provide, as it's been noticed, they have to provide to the town of Wareham, and they can't provide that until month 28. So that would be, in effect, the termination. If they exercised it, it would be no earlier than month 37. All of the capital payments would be made prior to that time. The PEG operating, public educational, government access operating support continues to be on the Verizon license, 5% of Verizon's and its affiliates' gross annual revenue. That's the maximum allowed under the Cable Act, and that pays for community television PEG access in Wareham. The PEG interconnection and cable casting, Verizon continues to pick up at the studio, the access studio, the nonprofit PEG Disney, Wareham TV at 505 Main Street. Cable service to public buildings, I'm unaware of any town where Verizon actually provides cable service to public buildings, because in most towns, served by Comcast, you can come and Comcast provides that. However, if the town so chooses, that would notice to Verizon, they would require it to provide cable service to public buildings. There's a list of the current public buildings as Appendix A of the license, and as you know, Wareham has a large amount of public buildings. Under an FCC order in 2019, that could have some effect on the funding of the license, may or may not. We would think it should not, but I think it's unlikely the town would need or require cable service to public buildings from Verizon, since it already has it from Comcast. The electronic program guide, you familiar with that? Where programs can be recorded through the television set electronically, or it could be viewed later. That's available for other cable programming. The system this license provides, as did the prior license, that if Verizon were to provide that anywhere, the Commonwealth, they would have to come to Wareham and discuss providing the same in Wareham. Additionally, PEG access video-on-demand programming that's on-demand on the cable TV system. Verizon has its own programming, a certain program on video demand. The license provides, as did the renewal five years ago, that if Verizon provides that elsewhere in the Commonwealth, they have to come and discuss the provision of that service in Wareham. So totality, the license has strong funding. The final issue was confirmed today, the 5% of gross revenues. I'd like to thank Verizon for being a good negotiator, understanding the importance of PEG access in Wareham, and coming to a license terms that serve both the town and the residents, and make Verizon a better cable company. It's a strong license financially. It's very protective legally of the town going forward, and protective of the town's financial interest and the town's public right of way. There were a few final issues that were all resolved, and resolved in a way that worked well for the town. And again, I thank Verizon for having a -- an effective negotiation where both parties were able to obtain what was most important to them. The town financial funding, excellent license language, and Verizon some flexibility in the event that, going forward, they change their paradigm. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Of course, it's a public hearing, and you'll want to hear from the public also.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Mr. Underhill, do you want to add any more information?
At this time, you know, it's been very short-term in the negotiation process with Verizon. I appreciate Verizon and Attorney Solomon for working hard behind the scenes to get this done. We got a late start, you know, on the negotiations, so we'll get this done in a couple months. And going forward, you know, the next step is start negotiations with Comcast, but as of right now, I think that's all I have to say. It's up to the board at this point. If there's any public that has any comments. We had a few short some of our meetings, nothing that stood out, you know, outside of, you know, quality of service issues that happened during intermittent periods of time. We did some surveys from the public. We got quite a few answers from the surveys, and we hope we answered most of those in this agreement.
Could you identify what some of those comments would have been on the survey?
Some of the comments in the survey were, you know, related to, you know, how the residents feel about the service that's being provided, how about the service as far as customer support goes. We cannot negotiate per the Cable Act, programming or cost of the service, but we can at least, you know, determine, you know, at least inquire on the service that's being provided, quality of service, you know, whether or not, you know, our residents are having a tough time with customer support issues, as well as quality, and as well as we add some questions, you know, to the community as to whether or not the services that they like from being provided by WCTV, yes, to help us in the attachment process, and those are the types of questions that we get some pretty good feedback on.
Excellent. Do any of my board members have any questions? Mr. Bessie?
Ms. Wertz had her hand up first.
This is more curiosity than anything else. I am not familiar with this part of business, but I've never had a business relationship where the supplier actually put in a clause where they could negotiate to get out early. Is that typical?
Not usually. Verizon, in the past, we've been able to negotiate 10-year contracts. You know, Comcast wants to be in the business of providing TV services. They were a TV company that's providing -- They were a TV company that's providing telephone. Verizon is a telephone company that is providing TV services, you know, and the last agreement was a five-year agreement, you know, with an out, and this one's a five-year agreement with an out as well. They're not sure what direction they want to turn in. That's why they're unwilling to commit to a 10-year agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might-
Yes, Mr. Solomon.
Add to that. Thank you. The 2018 license didn't have a, did not have a unilateral out. It had a provision where if the town treated another cable company better, or another video provider, it provided some remedies for Verizon, but it did not have a unilateral out. You know, that began at the point in time where Verizon began telling Wall Street that its goal was to provide video streaming, possibly just as all customers being wireless customers, and move on from cable. They came into cable because they knew it was important to have the triple play, to have not only cellphone and home service, but to have video. But, you know, they're an excellent cable company, and I think they're going to be, you know, we don't know for sure, but I think it's an excellent likelihood they'll remain a cable company for longer than they might have originally hoped a few years ago because they've done well at it and they have customers, and it's hard to change your paradigm when you're serving a good customer base. But it, there's no town where, no license since 2021, January, that hasn't had the unilateral out. But the, what's in exchange for is, as I mentioned, the five years of capital. So with the last five-year license and with this five-year license, Verizon will have a 10-year license, which, as Matt said, is a typical cable license traditionally. It's the maximum allowed under state law. So with that, this five-year license and the unilateral out, they're paying, as mentioned, the PEG capital, five years of PEG capital, paying that within the three years. So they recognize that, to get a town to agree to the three-year out, that they needed to step up and make sure that the town didn't lose any capital dollars. And additionally, the capital number is a good number here. It's good for both parties, but it's a good number for the town. So in a sense, it was exchanged. At the end of this license, if they go the full five years, the town will have had a 10-year license with Verizon for the last two and would have had strong capital, paid more quickly than it otherwise would have been paid. So at the end of the day, if someone decides they don't want to provide service, it's hard to require it. Final point. To Verizon's credit, when they came along, unlike AT&amp;T, which does not provide video in Massachusetts, they understood that they needed a cable license. They felt they have their system in the ground, but in order to provide cable service, they needed a cable license. By the same token, they understand that a license is not just their right to provide service, but that they're making promises in consideration of that license. So that they, the fact that they sought a unilateral out means that they agreed with the town, and this is certainly correct, that it's a mutual contract, that they have obligations. It's not like a driver's license or a special permit to a business to go, where you have the right to do something but don't have to do it. By entering that agreement, they recognize they have obligations. And so given that, they're seeking the unilateral out in exchange for consideration, is they're putting their cards on the table, saying, here's their view of the world going forward, that they'd like some options, and in exchange for those options, they realize that they have to provide consideration to the town. And in my judgment, and the judgment of the committee, the consideration that Verizon's paid here in terms of dollars and timing is such that it's in the town's interest to agree to move ahead with that unilateral out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
Thank you.
You all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Bessie?
Mine is kind of more of a comment. I have Verizon at my house, so I can speak firsthand experience. From a customer service standpoint, and this was just, I think, two weeks ago, I was having a lot of issues with my cable service in the house. Made a couple of phone calls, had to talk to, you know, probably four or five different people to get where I needed to be, but, you know, they sent a technician out. He must have spent four hours at my house trying to figure out what the issues were, but, you know, didn't leave until he checked every nook and cranny of what was causing my services not to work. And, you know, I could have paid for it, but, you know, they came out and did a courtesy service to make, to figure out what it was, even though some of it was inside of my house. And technically, you know, usually when it's an interior issue, they make you pay, and in this case, they didn't. So from the customer service standpoint, it's great. I mean, I wish the price could come down a little bit, but that's, you know, that's a story for another day. But from a service standpoint, you know, to some of the, you know, public's concern, I don't think you'll have to be concerned with, you know, the service as long as you're willing to put in a little bit of time to get to the right person. They will come out and, you know, address your needs. So, you know, that's just a kudos to them for what they do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Mr. Slavin?
Just a couple of things. So they're accelerating the payments to us, Matt?
Correct.
Okay. We have one issue that's a constant complaint. For some reason, the sound keeps breaking up a lot of times. You can go along fine. You can hear it on the TV. I hear it on my iPad okay, but we have a lot of customers that say, well, they're listening to the selectman's meetings, planning board meeting, et cetera. While people are talking, something is interfering with the sound, so you really can't hear what's going on, just as a comment to them.
Is that just the local access channels, or is that on all the channels?
Just on the local access channels.
Local access channels, okay.
And when they're broadcasting, just the meetings, it seems to be pretty common. The other thing is, several years back, probably at least five, when we had the last contract, the question was whether the cable companies themselves were going to survive or whether they were going to slowly disappear. And I think that's still an issue. So, you know, whatever we're doing, we want to make sure we know where we're at, because, you know, this is still a question, how long the cable companies, as they exist today, will continue to exist.
Go ahead.
Correct. You know, that's why we, you know, tried to include, you know, A, that's why Verizon's trying to look for an out, and B, you know, that's why we tried to get the capital in a shorter period of time to make sure that, you know, on our sides, we were prepared.
Appreciate all the hard work.
Yep. I know you want to move on. One last point on the dollars. Just on the last license, the dollars, PEG capital dollars were a combination of a percentage of gross revenue and a fixed dollar amount. And in this license, the PEG capital dollars are just a fixed dollar amount. So that is another advantage of this license. And that reflects the fact that with a three-year out, it's more difficult to do a percentage, but it earns the benefit of the town of Wareham and PEG access because you have certainty as to what those dollars are, not only a good number, but not subject to change going forward, and that's something Verizon volunteered and has willingly done in its desire to have flexibility in exchange for sort of a premium in funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. We understand.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick? No, okay. Is there anyone in the audience here who would like to speak in favor of the license renewal? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the renewal of the license? Okay. Now I will ask the audience who is possibly watching through the Zoom access, if you have a question or if you have a comment to speak in behalf of the renewal of the license, please raise your hand. And if you choose to speak against the renewal of the license, please raise your hand. No? Okay. I hear no other comments or concerns, so if you are all set, are you all set, Mr.? Then I will ask for a meeting, a motion to close the hearing, please.
I make a motion. We close the hearing on the Verizon New England Inc. license.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion on closing the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is closed. I will now entertain a motion to grant the cable, the, grant the license as submitted by the Cable Advisory Committee this evening.
Said motion.
Is there a second discussion?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to grant. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is granted and therefore, because, this is good, because it expires tonight at midnight. Am I correct?
Correct.
So the technical name is the Verizon New England Inc. license.
Correct.
And I believe I have the document here, but if... Okay. Do you need the signature now?
Nope, I can move, I can move the contract in the select board's office, and if you want to sign it next time you're in the town hall.
Does it require all five of us?
Mr. Solomon?
Majority.
Just a majority.
Okay. So if you have a signature page, why don't you give it to us and we'll sign it right now? If that's okay, is that all right, Mr. Solomon?
Fine. Madam Chair, a very last comment. I just want to say, as you know, the town is incredibly well-served by the many things that Matt does. No one, I don't think anyone tasked him necessarily being in charge of cable, but the work he does at all hours and at all times and with very thoughtfulness and as a partner and more is really appreciated. And I did want to say that committee members Butler and Rogers keep you on your toes, very active with both their reviews and with original ideas of testing certain language and very creative and practical provisions, and the board's well-served by its committee, and I appreciate the committee being available as a full partner in this process. And the very final point is actually, we were negotiating for nine months. It seems like a shorter period compared to the, but that reflects how Verizon does its licenses and COVID, but more so how Verizon does its licenses. But at the end of the day, it was a nine-month process.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. I don't think there's any one of us sitting at this table here who hasn't come to fully appreciate Mr. Underhill, who I fondly call Oz, because he regularly comes out from behind that green curtain and provides just magical service.
Yes.
Any further discussion on this information, on New England Verizon, Verizon New England Inc. license? Mr. Solomon, we thank you very much, and we'll say good evening to you, and thank you, Mr. Underhill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Give you a piece of his salary.
Yeah, right. Next on the agenda is a citizens petition article, and the petitioner is not here. Is Sheila McDonough in the audience? Please raise your hand.
I spoke to her a week ago and explained she had to come.
Thank you. We will skip over that then. We are not going to be doing item 8F or H, so I will now go to the discussion and possible vote to make the constable terms, the appointed constable terms, to be three years. The reason this is on the agenda at this time is we have historically had one-year appointments for our constables. We have found that virtually every other city and town in the Commonwealth has three-year terms for our constables, and that makes much more sense in terms of their paperwork as well as our paperwork. So I did provide an enormous amount of information about constable appointments and other information. So in, if you have any questions, I think I can answer them. We are in the process of providing, of putting together for a future agenda, the renewal of, I think it's 12 constables who are appointed by this town. We have one elected constable. So you would be seeing that recommendation in June. Their terms expire June 30th, so they would be expiring three years from the June 30th date. Is there any discussion or any questions?
No.
No? No? Mr. Solomon, you don't have any questions on that one? Nope. He's not paying attention. Watch it. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion that we vote to make appointed constable terms for three years effective June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to make the terms now three years. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Okay. We are not talking about F, so discussion and possible vote to approve the following union contracts as they are on the agenda. Mr. Sullivan, we talked about these last...
Yep, it went through on the executive session and...
Mr. Sullivan, I apologize for cutting you off.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, Mr. Chadwick needs to leave the premises and not participate in the vote because he belongs to an EMT Association and it might be related. Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. I apologize for...
Thank you.
I was going too fast. We will call you back to the meeting when... Thank you. Yep. Mr. Sullivan, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yep, they were brought forward for, you had the executive session. There was affirmative action taken, so now let's just bring it to the open session for you to vote on it in the open. And it is the four-person EMS, the police union, I believe the library union.
And the laborers' foremen?
Four persons.
Yeah. Okay. So therefore, they're listed on your agenda?
Yeah. You just want to go ahead and make a motion for all four at once?
Yes, please. Yep. Go ahead.
I make a motion and that we approve the following union contracts, the AFSCME Council 93 FL-CIO Local 30 Wareham Library Employees. Second, the Mass Laborers Public Employees Council Union 1249. Number three, the third one, is Wareham Professional Firefighters EMT Association IAFF Local 2895. And finally, Wareham Police Union MCOP Local 423.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Number two is the Foremen's Union, just so you know.
Yeah, it is only the Foremen's Union. And they're, yeah, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 400.
Now, this comes before town meeting, and I appreciate your consideration and consideration of the unions that worked on the interactive bargaining process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan. Can you find Mr. Chadwick?
Probably asleep.
Thank you.
Tell him his pizza boy.
Yeah, he's... Next on the agenda is the discussion and possible vote to establish dates for the process of calling a 2023 June special town meeting. This is... Miss Wertz, do you have the process? Do you want to read it?
I do have the process, and do you want me to read simply down the dates?
No, I want you to read the whole thing, but I want you to try and imitate Mr. Titlebaum's speed reading.
Oh, my God, that means he talks at 10,000 words per second. I'll try. Process for calling June special town meeting for June 12th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. Select Board establishes all dates for completion of a warrant for the special town meeting. Monday, April 24th, 2023. Select Board votes to hold the special town meeting on June 12th, 2023, and to provide notice thereof of Wednesday, April 26th, 2023, and to open the warrant effective Friday, May 5th, 2023, 10 days' notice before warrant closes. Wednesday, April 26th, 2023, last date to post upon town's principal bulletin board and the town website, notice of intention of the select board to call the special town meeting for June 12th, 2023, and to post the May 5th, 2023 opening and May 16th, 2023 closing dates of the warrant. 24 hours after voting, the date warrant opens. Monday, May 15th, 2023, last day for submission of articles and/or petitions to be inserted in the warrant 10 days or more after warrant opens. Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, select board officially closes the warrant 10 days or more after warrant opens. Friday, May 19th, 2023, last day to post the special town meeting upon town principal bulletin board and the town website, and to deliver a copy of the warrant to the town moderator and to the chairman of the finance committee. Special town meeting warrant to be delivered at least 21 calendar days before the commencement date of such meeting. Monday, June 12th, 2023, commencement of special town meeting.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept this process?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I will go for a roll. Do you have a question?
I just have a question of clarity. On the date of May 19th, you said that that was a Monday, but it's a Friday, so I just want to make sure that the...
I said Monday.
You said Monday the 19th.
Because it does say Friday. I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to make the clarity so people understand the actual day and not just the date.
Thank you.
I was like, I didn't think my...
It is a Friday.
Yeah. I was like, I didn't think my birthday was on a Sunday this year, so I just had to check that.
You never know.
Could be.
Any further discussion about that? Okay, I will go for the roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The reason we are holding this special town meeting is because we know that the sewer commissioners have at least two articles that they need to present to the town, but they also needed time to be able to get all of their information possible so that the town meeting would be able to understand exactly what it is that they're recommending to that town meeting. And next, we have some articles that we have not yet voted on, on the two warrants. Mr. Sullivan, do you want to lead that conversation?
Yeah, if you want to go through, I think they've disabled the screen sharing, but get that going, that'd be great. Otherwise, the EMS budget, I've sent that to all of you earlier today.
And they have a copy of it in front of them.
All right, thank you for, they've allowed the screen sharing, so is there anything in particular you want to go over through that?
All of our members do have a copy of the budget and I don't know if you have any questions. Mr. Bessie?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at it here. It, it looks like the budget has stayed relatively flat for the last three years. Doesn't look like there's much change. Is, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, we actually see and, let's see if I can pull it up. If you look at what was going on when you saw the, the higher salary amounts, we actually brought that down in fiscal '23 due to the, when we started having issues with some of the funding on there. So you'll see the first big jump is back in 2024. That's what some of the, you'll see a part-time. What we're bringing forward is, I talked to you about the captain's position, we're going to be filling some of the shifts. That would have been the captains with part-timers and that's been mainly the change on there. The steadiness of the holidays really been a, just something that hasn't been expended all the way down, so we can go either way with that. But I tried to bring the FY '23 budget more in line with actual expenditures and we've just made some modest adjustments to this. And if anybody remembers, this is what's called an offset receipt. It's not part of the annual budget and the revenue it generates, it covers itself on the expenses and usually you have some return. We had sort of one of the COVID years, if you will, where we came up short about $50,000, but in '22, you turned back about, I think it was a little over $200,000. So it's been, it's been steady, but yeah, we're catching up on some of the pay and costs and then you'll see in the expenses, the big changes to be able to bring in line with their actual revenues. I'm still not putting the, the lease payments in the, in the annual budget for them. Just gets a little too tight.
Thanks. Mr. Bessie?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay. No, any questions? No, Mr. Chadwick, sorry.
That's fine. So, Mr. Sullivan, I'm looking here at Cape Island's EMS. CIE MS. Have we researched looking at a medical director from any other facilities to possibly look at other avenues of saving funds for that? And the reason I'm asking that is I know a lot, Marion just left Cape Island's EMS. You know, unfortunately Cape Island's EMS doesn't do what they used to, providing DOT classes and are refreshers like they used to. Yeah, I just, I think it's time to start researching other avenues on that and I know that may have nothing to do with us, but just, just a recommendation on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I can't, Mr. Slavin?
Just with Jared, do you have any recommendations or do you want to look into it? As long as it's not a conflict.
Yeah, as long as it's not a conflict, I would have to ask Mr. Bowen about that. But I believe, and I can't remember the doctor's name off the top of my head, Marion just switched to a doctor at St. Luke's, who's a phenomenal guy, and I believe it's something honestly to look at. I don't think he's that expensive as it is right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other, yeah?
Just so the, basically everybody understands, the, the budget's gone through the governor's budget and now there's a House budget that's been kind of processed through. I believe with the last cherry sheet we got yesterday or today, I think the town is receiving somewhere around, what they call UGA, which is the general revenues from the state, I think we're about plus $100,000, which doesn't even begin to cover the normal inflation rates of everything else. The school, as the state has, and Governor Baker before, and the new Governor Haley as well, has really guaranteed the schools substantially more income over a five-year period. And I believe the school budget from the state on the Chapter 70 is up approximately $1.6 million, which makes it a little bit easier for them, but the towns, the other town departments, because they're all one town at the end of the day, we are suffering and the problem we're having as well is that the pay in what we call the private sector is substantially higher than in the public sector, which has always been that way, but it's started to catch up. And now it's to the point where not just Wareham, but the 27 communities that I represent through SERPA, we're all having the same issue of retaining employees because people are going out and easily getting jobs in the private sector for substantially more money. They're able to pay it, we can't. You know, we're fixed, you know, with union contracts, everything else. But it's becoming a serious problem and we're looking at ways to train people to fall into places as we lose them. Right now, I think we have five or six people that are retiring all at the same time and it's going to be a problem finding these people, replacing them because we can't afford to have what I call a backup or succession plan, where you have someone behind the other person coming right in. And that training is extremely difficult, so I'm going to ask everybody to please understand that if you hit a particular department and it has a couple retirees, to give them a little break until they get up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the EMS budget? Then I'll accept a, a a motion to recommend favorable action to the town meeting.
So I, I move to recommend favorable action on Article 8 EMS budget of the annual 2023 spring town meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
I think I'm going to have to abstain from this.
Thank you. And myself, yes, 401. Thank you so much. Mr. Sullivan, can we do the revolving accounts item? It's item number four on the...
Yeah, that's just a pro forma one, it's printed in the warrant and it's the same, you know, except for the two there in the, in the special.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recommend favorable action to the town meeting?
So moved.
Is this the second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, 500. Mr. Sullivan, the capital plan, sir, which is item six on the regular town meeting. The 2024 capital plan.
The, you're talking about the, on the annual town meeting? We're passing that one over. The only capital will be in the special town meeting.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please, for no recommendation?
Make a... Whoever wants to do it.
So moved.
Thank you. Was there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made to recommend no action. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin? Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself? Oh, Mr. Chadwick?
Thanks, thanks a lot. Yes.
And myself, yes, okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Sullivan, Article 7, which is the fiscal year '24 budget.
Well, we presented that last week.
We did.
And it's, I sent you also the documents, so if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'd like to know who the person behind you, who I think is a champion spelling bee person, am I right?
This is Maggie.
Oh, it's Maggie. Oh, I'm sorry. How are you today?
Can you say hi, everybody?
Can you say hi? Do you have one of the dogs with you?
No, they're all hiding.
Oh, okay, good. All right, any questions on the motion? On the budget? No? May I have a motion to recommend favorable action, please?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz and myself?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Sullivan, I believe we can now go to the special and we are missing four there. The first one is the budget transfers, which is special meeting S1.
If you, they've got them inside the Finance Committee handbook, but they're... It's fine, they, they use MIS for the, the technology, which is, which is kind of technically the right way to phrase it, but it's not that we do it in the town meeting transfers. So just let you know, we've got transfer from, from police salaries, $80,000 to general fund, to the general insurance fund. The surplus in the police salaries is, as you know, we've had a few vacancies that weren't, weren't completely filled, so we've got a little bit of surplus at the end of the year. You know, it's tough to get laterals, especially now, so most of our, when we get a vacancy, we're sending people through the academy. So the academy takes some time, it also gets, takes time to have an academy opening. And then general fund insurance, if you remember, that was, we got hit with the insurance premium increase, you know, after the fiscal year, it hit us for the full amount of the, of the new school.
Okay, any questions?
From...
I'm sorry.
From accounting, counting salaries, $14,600 to planning salaries. We had the, we had the vacancy in accounting and the assistant, in the clerical position for a little while, so we've got that and able to move it over to some planning salaries. As you know, we had a long-time employee leap and we've been trying to backfill that, that position, but there's also some, some payments that we had to make, so we're able to do that within the budget right now, so it suggests we do it. From technologies over to assessing, I think I was trying to look through the assessing, the salary line, and I honestly think that it's because it was budgeted for 52 instead of 52.2 weeks. As you know, you never, it's never really a 52-week year. You have, you have a couple points, usually a couple days that carry over. So I think that's the, for, you know, $2,400 difference, that's what it looks to be. And then from MIS to MIS expenses, so technology, salary to technology expenses, $7,000. You know, we, we lost, what was it, Mr. Edwards in the MIS, in the tech department earlier and when we filled it, it was for a little bit less and so the expenses, that's going to actually buy the licensing for the initial phase of the dual, dual, dual-factor authorization. All our computers are going to have to have it in the town to keep on receiving cybersecurity insurance. And there's going to be two phases for that. It's buying the licensing, it's also buying the key fobs, et cetera. In the capital, you'll see some cost for the key fobs. And then from the health insurance line, I've got a small surplus projected to the FICA, which is the, the income tax we pay for the, or payroll tax at 1.45%. It's, while it's on track still, as you can see, during, right when the summer rolls around, we have five paychecks that go out for the, for the school department, that's for the summer checks and that sometimes that will, will skew it at the end. So we know that we have sort of, the best way I can phrase it is a balloon payment at the end of, end of the year and we're projecting with the balloon payments we've seen in the past and the way it's going that we could have a $15,000 surplus. We're probably putting a little more than need be, but that's fine. And we increased FICA for FY '24 as well to try and offset that as a future issue. So those are the, the, the transfers, if you will.
Thank you. And if you have any questions on this, Mr. Slavin?
I just have one, it's probably not pertinent. I know that the payroll, the salary account for schools is in deficit and I know at the end of the year, the, the accounting department on the school side moves money to take care of that. Does a town accountant have to also go through that? Because I know with the auditors, my concern is only that because our audit report is so clean these days, they're tending to look grants, et cetera, and how we run some of these things and whether or not it would come back and have a problem for us.
The, the schools are allowed to transfer by school committee vote, that doesn't require them to go to town meeting for inter, inter-budget transfers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then I'll accept a motion to recommend favorable action.
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action. Any further discussions on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
I would just like to clarify that we're voting yes for S1 of the special spring annual town meeting warrant. Yes.
Thank you. 500, myself, yes, okay. Mr. Sullivan, I believe we now go to the spring 2023 capital. Ooh. Yeah, which is item number S3.
Okay, it's going to take me just a moment to pull it up and get it shared on the screen.
Thank you. Mr. Sherpa, if you would like to leave, you're all set to go. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I should have made that clear to you earlier. Thank you.
Mr. Sherpa, can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. So going through the first part, we have for the public schools, two special education buses and 177-passenger bus. That is to purchase and equip them, including video, the video monitoring and other items that you need. And the total cost for those is $330,000. The next one is, if you remember, we were authorized to borrow for the portion of the MSBA for the boilers over at the high school and after the reimbursement, because I think it's about a $1, $1.2 million project or, or so, maybe a little larger, our, our portion of the project after the reimbursement, it's about $650,000, but I may put $720,000 here just in case there's any project overrun. And I think rather than borrowing for, you know, project less than a million dollars, I think we should use free cash while we have it to, to take care of that project and not, not burden our debt service line. The next one is a 10-wheeler for the municipal maintenance department with plow package, $375,000. I will tell you, in about, over the last, I think, three years, that's probably gone up, close to $100,000. It's pretty, pretty crazy and doing it now, because it will take us about two years to get that truck in. The one we have does work. I believe it's from, it's, it's 1990s, so it's early 90s. It's getting, it's getting a little dangerous. I mean, they take good care of it, it looks good, but it's getting, getting a little beat up for the use it has. And as you know, that's from the, we use that for snow and ice, from salting, sanding, plowing, then using it for, you know, when they're doing any projects, including moving heavy loads, bringing gravel, doing things such as that, so it's a workhorse truck, so we definitely need that in our fleet. There's $100,000 to the next one for a trailer leaf vacuum. As you know, they'll suck those, suck the leaves right up. The one that we have, we actually bought used years ago and... The one that we have, we actually bought used years ago and, uh, sort of rehabbed it and nursed it, uh, nursed it along, but it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's not too healthy anymore, so I think it's time to, to get that going. And, uh, it's a really useful tool. As you can imagine, we have quite a few leaves in town. The municipal maintenance department pick up with a plow package. Uh, that's, we're looking around three quarter ton, so that can do some plowing as well. And, uh, I believe that one's also a, I had to double check, that's a nineteen nineties version. I have them written down, just not, that I've got at the office, so. Uh, that one, that's experiencing some rot now. In fact, uh, some things burst through, ended up going through the, uh, tailgate and, uh, while it was on the highway, so that was none too pleasant. And then, uh, this one, uh, Wearham Free Library Exterior Rehabilitation, three hundred thousand. It, I know it seems pretty generic. I want to start getting into there. I think you've all seen the issues that we have with the exterior of the, uh, of the building, including the, uh, the, the sort of the big window that you see if you've been inside, or the outside having a lot of issues. Uh, this is going to do two things. We want to try and resolve the water intrusion besides the patching that we've done on it from that window and, uh, really get a sense of what needs to be done to, uh, tighten up that building. We've done the roof now. We're going to be looking for the, uh, HVAC as well system through the, um, through grants, and, uh, we just want to button up that building. It's unfortunately, it's, uh, it really went down south, down, down real quick. So, uh, I, I have to say, I'm not trying to denigrate anything, but the, uh, how, how that was constructed did, did not help to deal with, uh, the New England weather. But, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to get ahead of it and, uh, start working on it. Three hundred thousand will not take care of everything, but it will start getting us into the, uh, conversation. Let us know where we're going. Inspection Services Department, three vehicles. I'm sure you've seen the Chevy Colorados out there. We used to have four. We had, um, we're down to three, and one of them, just we were denied, uh, a registration for it. It's not passing the inspection. Uh, you know, after a while, while the mileage isn't up there, we're starting with the type of environment we're in, they get worked, and, uh, we're starting to see a lot of, uh, some of the rot in some of the frames and such, which they're really looking into for the inspections now. So I think it's well worth it. Those, geez, those things have to be well over, uh, well over twenty years old now, I think, right? Or, or closer, maybe in the teens. I'll, I'll double check with it, but they, uh, we certainly got our useful life out of them. I'll tell you, that was back when I believe they got them for about fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars each, so.
Mr. Slavin thinks they're two thousand and fives.
Yeah, two thousand and five, thank you. So almost, you know, just shy of twenty years. So, you know, that's, the joke I make with them is that when you ask somebody, you know how we still say rolling down the window, you do the crank motion? Well, those still do the crank motion. That's how you roll down the windows, so. There's, there's no more of the, those are the, uh, no more of the automatic windows than those. But, uh, we're looking to replace them with the, uh, with, uh, plug-in electric hy- or hybrid vehicles. So looking for something that's fuel efficient and, uh, can, can work for the setup. But they need to be SUVs for the type of locations that they're going. So, um, you know, I'd say SUVs and preferably all-wheel drive to, uh, four-wheel drive. So I know they looked at some of the, um, the, the Toyota RAV fours. They, they have the plug-in, uh, hybrid, uh, which we're running around, the, uh, thirty-three thousand. We have some other funding out there, still about twenty thousand, so if we do this for the three vehicles for a hundred, and with the twenty as a backstop, I think we'll be able to get something that will, uh, that should last the town a long time as well. The next one is IT three-year cyber contract for, uh, cyber, cyber monitoring. We have a, uh, contract through the state bid list with, uh, Arctic Wolf. While you, you know, we don't have staff members in the, in checking the, the cybersecurity twenty-four seven, we can't possibly. So this is something that, uh, was mentioned through some of the trainings, I know, from Mr. Underhill, and it's been effective. It's caught one intrusion, and, um, I know so far that was happening on a Friday evening on a long weekend. So I thought that was, you know, proof was in the pudding right there, that, uh, it was well worth it. And, uh, it also picked up somebody that was, uh, if, that was mining off of our system. So we were able to, uh, get them out of there as well, so. Well worth it. We want to do a three-year contract with them now, and I think that's going to be something that continues on for forever. So just trying to figure out, you know, maybe after the, these three years are up, we build it into the budget as well. But there's a lot of technology costs and, you know, I'll tell you, I think any of the, any of the towns have been hit with ransomware. I think this was, uh, small potatoes in comparison to what they had to pay, especially over three years. Technology, it's starting to, um, roll out two things, dual center, dual, I, I just will, uh, my goal is to be able to say that for town meeting, but the dual factor authentication. Uh, I'm sure many of you have it, where if you're signing in something on your laptop, it goes onto your, uh, cell phone, and you have to say, yes, that's me. Well, you know, it's a lot of our employees that have computers don't have town cell phones. Uh, so this is, uh, we need to create a dual, dual factor authentication system, and, uh, you know, that's also buying the key fobs that would be associated with it and getting that up and running. And again, that actually, without that and the cyber monitoring, we'd lose our cybersecurity insurance through MYA. Uh, next item is a combination. It's tasers, about thirty-four tasers for the, uh, police department and, uh, you know, I got, sorry. Yeah, excuse me, twelve tasers, but there was, uh, thirty-four cartridges altogether. But, um, twelve tasers for the Wearham PD and, uh, doing a body camera pilot program as well. So the, uh, cost for the tasers, including all equipment and everything, is approximately just under thirty-seven thousand dollars. And the rest of that, we're going to use for the, uh, camera pilot program. Next is probably something, uh, uh, select board member Chadwick would know very much about, and these are for the EMS department, for life pack monitor, uh, defibrillators. Those are, they're serious pieces of, uh, equipment. These are not serviced anymore. They're past their, their functional time, so, uh, it's time to, uh, take care of these. These are, these will actually, uh, do, to, the, between the, doing the defibrillation or the monitoring, we can actually send the signals to the hospital before you're going. It's a pretty, they're pretty impressive pieces of machinery. And, um, you know, we were talking to, uh, Charlie Kluber, Kluber on the capital planning, and he believes, he was remembering when they first came on board and they were a fraction of the cost, but like everything, uh, the, the cost isn't substantial. So, and then the last one is, you know, we've been, um, we still, the, the ambulance was approved in ten twenty-one. We still have not even received the chassis on that. And, you know, we've done one payment on it so far. No, we haven't, we've, we've got one payment approved on it so far. We haven't paid for it yet. And, um, saying let's, by the time we get this, we will be outside of our cycle to purchase an ambulance every three years. So my recommendation is to pay this off, uh, have that payment put aside in full, so we can start working on, uh, a lease as soon as we get the, the, this one. So the total amount is two, the, so what I'm going through is that's from free cash funded, and the total amount is two million, seven hundred and five thousand.
Before we move on, Mr. Chadwick, did you want to say something on one of those?
On, on two of them.
Go ahead.
Ambulances are anywhere from, uh, two, three to four years out, and I know fire is its own thing, but, uh, engines are about four years out, and ladders are anywhere from five to six years out. I also wanted to say, uh, something about the life packs. A lot of people are looking at that number and going, oh my God, how is that possible? These are lifesaving devices, uh, and the newer ones allow us, like, uh, Mr. Sullivan said, it allows us to send all the information in the back of the ambulance, anywhere from your blood pressure to the medications we're using, um, and codes. It allows us to send everything that is going in the back of the ambulance that's going on to the hospital, so they're well prepared ahead of time, unlike they used to be. Where we would just give a normal radio report and we were playing, uh, they were playing a guessing game to see how bad our patients were. With these new monitors, they'll actually be able to see in real time, uh, what twelve leads, EKGs, like I said, what medications we're giving, uh, at what times. Perfect example is, uh, epi during a code is supposed to be given every three to five minutes. So with that said, you want to know exactly how many you've given, um, without having to give it over the radio report, because you only have, uh, one paramedic in the back. So that way, when the hospital knows and you're, on your fourth round of epi, and you've given, uh, it at two minutes, the hospital will be ready with another round, uh, as soon as you come through that door. And that's basically it.
Thank you. Any other questions on any, or comments on any of the things on the above, the borrowing? No, go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
And then next to the borrowing, um, this should be for the Division of Natural Resources. Purchase and equipment or replacement patrol vessels, six hundred and fifty thousand. You know, so Mr. Buckminster is almost beside himself to, to come forward on this, frankly. As you all know, he's, he's a humble person. He's, he really wants to make sure they've got the, uh, the safest equipment possible, and the boat that they've been using, it's just, it's, they've maintained it very well, but it's, uh, it's, it's hitting its, its usual life for the type of services they use it for. It was originally a pleasure craft. I'll have a, uh, I have him write up a, sort of a better explanation. He did a great job coming before the capital planning committee. The one thing I want everybody to understand is how this will be done is we will borrow, uh, we're looking through between seven to, to ten million on this. Excuse me, seven to ten years on it. You know, so it's almost like a, a capital lease, if you will, and, uh, it'll be paid through the harbor service permit fees, which is what those fees are meant to pay for, things such as that. You know, I think we've all seen what can happen out of those waters. You start going out by, uh, by Stony Point Dyke, you go through into the canal, into other areas. We've seen some pretty horrific events go on through there, so we want to make sure we have something that's, uh, you know, for them, that's a, it's, it's a life safety boat, it's a tow boat, it's a fire boat. It's, it's everything. That is their platform. That's their police cruiser. That's their everything when you're out there. So I understand it's a, it's a lot of money, but it's, uh, as you know, they, they go through a lot of stuff, and we've got some of the best, uh, natural resources slash harbor, harbor folks there are, so. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions on any of those? Mr. Bessie?
So just on the, on the last piece, so you have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar number against the borrowing, but then you talk about a seven to ten year payback. Is there any idea of what the total cost of investment would be on that vessel, um, over the seven to ten year period?
Yeah, I mean, you're probably looking at anywhere between a, between a three and a half to four and a half percent interest on it. So, I mean, if you did, but it's going to depend on how you set it up with the interest. If you did it as a bond, your interest would be declining. If you set it up like a, um, like a, a vehicle, it would be different. So for example, if you look at a, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand, into that present value, call it, let's do it on the seven year, so you're eighty-four months at a, uh, call it a four percent interest rate. Your monthly payment is, uh, eight thousand nine twenty-three, so that'd be a hundred and seven, uh, oh eighty-two. So multiply that by seven, you're looking at about seven, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. So you could spend, uh, you know, you could spend a hundred K in interest on that. But if it's, uh, if it's on a bond with lowering, it might be a little bit, uh, a little bit lower on that case.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? I'll accept a motion for favorable recommendation to town meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recommend favorable action to the town meeting on item S3, which is the spring capital item. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Five zero zero, it is therefore. The union contracts, we already did that, am I right?
Yes.
Yep. And we did, that was four zero one, no, four's, yeah, four zero one on the contract, yeah. And then the last item that we have not yet voted on is-
No, it was, it was four zero zero. He wasn't-
It was four zero zero? Okay, sorry, yep.
It was four zero one on the EMS budget.
Yep, okay, thank you. And the, the only other thing, we haven't been able to hear from the citizen. We've invited her three times, and she has not shown up, and so.
Sure.
Do you want to make a motion? Do you want to just leave it there?
I think we'll leave it there because the question is on this, if it gets through town meeting, the board select one.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Sullivan, on the warrants? No?
No, I'm just trying to see if there was anything else, uh, outstanding. We did the transfers, the, during the, um, the union contracts, emergency medical, we did the budget. We did the, uh, the regular capital plan as well, and the revolving funds, and I think that was, uh, that was everything that was outstanding.
I think so too. Thank you. I have no forty-eight hour business, so let's jump to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's really, we're, we're sort of, after the nice long weekend and, uh, great Patriots Day, and, uh, it's always fun to watch the Boston Marathon. It's, uh, you know, especially over the last, uh, you know, it was the, the, one of the anniversaries of, uh, of the horrific bombing, and it's good to see how strong and resilient our folks are. So, uh, outside of that, it's just been working on town meetings, so I will see you all Monday night.
Thank you, sir. Liaison and initiative reports. Mr. Bessie?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Just one board's comment, uh, just to clarify earlier on a comment I said about Cape and Islands EMS. Dr. Meyer is the medical director for, um, Toby Hospital. She is the one that, uh, the license falls under for Wearham EMS to use. Uh, Dr. Meyer's a phenomenal doctor. I've attended, uh, a lot of her classes. If she was to possibly go out on her own, uh, like some of the other doctors have done at other hospitals, I would support her a hundred percent, um, but just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Okay. First off, I-
He winds up for these pitches.
Let's see, we have, uh, as I mentioned, Route six and twenty-eight. I'll have a meeting this Thursday. Originally it's supposed to be Monday, but we all forgot about the holiday. Ever Source, Enlanders, uh, myself, uh, the two fire departments, and Dave and I will be meeting on Thursday to discuss the six and twenty-eight status of the road, where we're at, what's, you know, what's happening through there, uh, what's happening with the poles, et cetera. I'll make a report next week. Another piece, which I'm not sure how it's going to be received. Originally Route six and twenty-eight was supposed to go to the Cohasset Narrows Road. We actually cut that road in half, you know, because of issues, et cetera. So, uh, I've actually, yesterday at a meeting, have submitted the request initially for the second half of that road to be completed. Uh, the engineering was done a while ago. The cost obviously is way shorter than what it is today. Uh, the town has to make a formal request for that, so that will be coming up again. I would say the earliest that would even be on the tip program would be twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-nine. I would say the earliest that would even be on the tip program would be 2028 to 2029. Selectment Wertz has mentioned about the Wee Weanic Bridge that starts this year. I've made some comments based on some of her concerns, et cetera. The information I have back is they will be handling this the same way they handled the Cohasset Narrows Bridge a few years ago, which took two years to do, and how they handle the traffic, et cetera. I'm not that concerned as some other people are how this will work through. They have a very, what I consider a very simple system of how the direct traffic. This is nothing like what's happening right now on the bridge that basically goes over the canal right now where the backups are like four to 10 miles. Takes a couple hours to get over, depending which direction you come in. This just won't happen at this time. I've got something else. I can't even read my own writing, sorry. Oh, yeah, the energy aggregation that most of us have signed up for in town, the contract is coming to an end, has to be renewed every two to three years. I'll be basically over the next two weeks having meetings to discuss what the contract's going to be and how much of an increase there'll be compared to this year. We're hoping to keep it as low as possible. Last item is Mr. Pidgen from the Finance Committee. Myself met with the school superintendent and the chair of the school committee. Several comments by myself and also by the finance committee got the school department a little upset. We basically met to clear the air on this, and I'm hoping that will come out of this will be a better understanding of how we all work together, reminding everybody it's a town of Wareham, it's not the town departments versus the school department. I think it's extremely important that we work on these items. And the last item, which will make Mrs. Whiteside really happy, is Smooth Move is available through Amazon. Thank you.
I count Mr. Slavin as one of my friends, but maybe I should reconsider that comment. I just want to remind everybody that town meeting starts at the it's been stated earlier at the elementary school on the 24th at 7:00 PM. Meeting starts at 7:00 PM. Please be there at 6:30 or so to be able to get checked in. This board will be meeting at 6:30 in the school as we did prior to the other town meeting. The town meeting will go either one night or two nights or three nights. And town moderator, town council, town administrator and myself met last Thursday to go over both warrants. And I think we all think that we're in pretty good shape for the shape that we're in. And I have no other comments, but I'd like to see Freckles. Is Freckles there? Is Freckles?
No. Freckles is behaving himself, taking a nap in front of the fireplace.
Okay.
Good deal.
Freckles is Mr. Bowen's absolutely wonderful dachshund, and he is a brat, right?
He likes to sit on my shoulder like a parrot.
Exactly. All right.
And apparently his his dachshunds better behave than my my children who show up.
It's wonderful to have your children show up. Means that they're very comfortable. That's great. Mr. Slavin, I'm waiting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to.
I think someone's anxious to get out of here.
Adjourn. I will go for a roll call vote, please. I know what you're going to do. Mr. Bessie?
Well, that's why I jumped and seconded really quick.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes, I'm on my way to get a smooth move.
And myself, yes, and Ms. Wertz.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night, Wareham.